I would say in the years since I left a direct involvement with U.S. foreign policy, I have, I've had occasion to feel like the folks who followed us in dealing with these affairs were actually dealing with a world that was in some ways far more difficult to fathom. War, whether it's hot or cold, has the good effect of making all the variables into things that can be assigned a value in terms of one or two players. In this case, the Xs and Ys were either Xs and Ys that had value in terms of U.S. interests or Soviet interests, and before you knew it, you could simplify all the equations and solve your policy problems by simply figuring out how they affected that fundamental equation that governed the confrontation between the great superpowers. That is obviously no longer the case, and the difficulties that the world poses for us because we suddenly no longer have this simplifying optic to look at things through have been evidenced, I think, by the challenges, I shall call them challenges because I prefer to be a little bit optimistic, that the United States has faced in the world and that we have been dealing with for better or worse since the end of the Cold War era. Those challenges have been a challenge not only to our immediate sense of the practicalities of foreign policy, but because that overarching vision is missing, they have also been a challenge to our ability to create a new vision, both for our place in the world and for the world's future as we understand it in terms of our principles. I think there are few areas of policy in recent years that have given evidence of that need for creative vision more clearly than the one you're going to hear about today. One way or another, we have tried over the course, I think of all our history, but especially our history in the 20th century, to represent the United States as a proponent of certain values in the world. For better or worse, we have tried, I think, from time to time to advance those values and to get others to understand that there was more to our foreign policy than might have been the case had we simply made our judgments on the basis of real politique. We stood for something in the world, and one of the things we stood for started out calling it self-determination, it became self-government, it always had something to do with our respect for the democratic principles that are at the foundation of our own form of government. We are still struggling in the world with what that means in practical terms, what is in our interest, what is not in our interest, how do our interests include the stake that we have always conceived we have in the fate of democracy around the world? And our policy toward Haiti over the course of the last several years has certainly posed that challenge in an explicit way. And I think we can feel privileged to have with us today somebody who has experience in the whole range of foreign policy challenges, from the economic challenges that have moved to the surface in recent times to the security challenges that were part of the Cold War era, to the challenges and special difficulties of our efforts to support and somehow to encourage democratic government around the world. James F. Dobbins has held appointments in the fields of security policy, international economics, crisis management. He was our ambassador to the European community, oversaw relations with Europe, obviously in the process of coming in to its own, helped to negotiate the U.S.-EC accord that in some ways was a harbinger of the GATT World Trade Agreement that was just passed by the Congress or the implementation of which was just passed by the Congress. He has also served as the principal deputy assistant secretary and then acting assistant secretary for European and Canadian affairs during a period that will be, I think, long remembered in the history of the world, which saw the liberation of Eastern Europe, the unification of Germany, the breakup of the Soviet Union. He had a long and extensive career prior to that, dealing with European affairs, dealing with United Nations affairs. He also, in his early stages of his career, was on the State Department Policy Planning Staff of Distinction that I shared with him, though much later, and also was on the U.S. delegation to the Vietnam Peace Talks and the U.S. delegation to the OECD. He served prior to that as an officer in the United States Navy and had two tours of duty in the Vietnam Theater. I think it is fair to say that, given that background and career, we are hearing today from someone who has seen it all and seen it during the years that he served from several different perspectives. Now, I myself, when I joined the Foreign Service years ago, always wondered about what kind of a challenge it would be to serve the varying masters that you have to serve as a, as a person who moves from Republicans to Democrats, liberals to conservatives. I finally decided that the whiplash was too great and gave in to my own predilections. But I think it takes not only great insight and great character, but great integrity to serve this nation with a sense of its permanent interests and the common principles that we all share while you help to guide it through the vicissitudes of an ever-changing international situation, reminding those who come from one side and the other that America has not only permanent interests, but we hope, permanent values, and that through every administration, we would want to preserve the interests and serve the values as best we could. I think Ambassador Dobbins is someone who comes from the best tradition of that understanding of our approach to American foreign policy, and we are privileged to have him with us today.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Alan, for that very generous introduction, and thank you all for, for having me here today. I spent yesterday in Haiti for the fourth time in the last 10 weeks, and each time I've gone, I've seen tangible changes and advances in the situation there. The first time I went shortly after the agreement which President Carter had negotiated with the help of Colin Powell and Sam Nunn, we were still debating, as I was there, how to encourage General Sedros to make himself scarce and how to assure a peaceful return for President Aristide. On the second time was, was when I accompanied President Aristide himself. This was a joyous occasion, an occasion for intense celebration, even ecstasy on the part of the bulk of the people, but it was also a tense, edgy time. The city was full of troops, and there was a concern that this euphoria, this ecstasy could turn into something more violent. The third time, a couple of weeks later, the city of Port-au-Prince was returning to something approaching normality, something it had not seen for many years. There was nightlife, the streets were full of people, the markets were open, the number of American troops were less, and they were less evident on the street. Yesterday, as I flew over the airport on my way in, I noted that there were big blank rectangle, rectangles all over the area which, on either side of the airstrip, which had been filled on my last trip, on my last trip with tents and encampments, a place where thousands of Americans had been, which was now once again vacant. The troops were largely off the streets, and Haitian police in new uniforms with name tags and badges with their pictures on it, a complete revolution in policing in Haiti, were back on the streets directing traffic and behaving in a manner to which they had not been accustomed. So there has been tangible progress even in this short period. I think it's generally admitted by everyone that this operation has gone better than expected. I think this is admitted by the operation's most severe critics, and it's also admitted by those of us who helped organize it and by those who were its proponents. And I think it might be worthwhile pausing for a moment to wonder, why is it going better than expected? I think there are three reasons. First is the quality of political leadership which President Aristide has exhibited since his return. I think it's surprised everybody, including his warmest admirers. His commitment to reconciliation, the skill at which he's been able to bring political consensus out of what is probably the most divided, polarized society in the Western Hemisphere, has, has been truly remarkable. It's clear to me, I think it's clear and should be clear generally, that President Aristide matured as a politician and as an individual during his years here in Washington. Secondly, I think that we had absorbed, drawn the lessons of previous military operations of this type. We drew the lessons of the U.S. intervention in Grenada, where inter-service cooperation had been so difficult, where so many problems had arisen and indeed probably casualties had occurred as a result of the inadequacies of that inter-service cooperation. This time, we were able to put a U.S. Army division on two U.S. Navy aircraft carriers, give them two plans, one for a forced entry and another for a voluntary deployment, and not tell them which plan was in operation until the 82nd Airborne was in the air. And they were able to pick the right plan and implement it flawlessly. And it took all four services, including the Coast Guard, to make that plan work as efficiently as it did. We also learned the lessons of other peacekeeping operations, and I would call these not the military lessons, but the political military lessons, because these operations are not military operations, they're political military operations. In a military operation, politics proceeds and then it succeeds the military operation, but in the course of the military operation, it's military factors, considerations, and judgments which take precedence. In a peacekeeping operation, the political and the military considerations have to go hand in hand throughout the operation if it is to have any chance of success. And I think our planning and the cooperation among the agencies involved in Haiti is a strong, is one of the major reasons why this operation has gone better than expected. But even if the critics of this operation concede that it has gone well, there is still doubt as to whether it's worth it, whether our interests are sufficiently engaged. Let me therefore address why I think this operation has been important for Haiti, important for the United States, and important for the world community. Haiti is, as I think you know, the poorest country in the hemisphere. Indeed, this is not just hemispheric poverty, this is world-class poverty. Haiti has a per capita GNP half that of India. This is really poor, and it's not only poor, it has intense income disparities. Of all of the world's regions, the income disparities in the Western Hemisphere are the greatest, and of all the countries in the Western Hemisphere, the income disparities in Haiti are the greatest. Haiti has had a long and unhappy history since it won its independence. It was one of the first countries of the Western Hemisphere to win its independence. It then entered a long period of isolation. It was isolated because it was a French-speaking language in an English-speaking lake surrounded by a Spanish-speaking continent, but it was isolated even more intensely because it was a society in a country of former slaves who had won their independence in a slave revolt in a slave era, surrounded by countries that continued to maintain slavery, including the United States, and wanted to have as little to do with possible with a country that had won its independence in that manner. So for a long time, Haiti existed in pride, in poverty, and in isolation. It's had a long, unhappy history. Thirty-eight Haitian presidents have taken office since Haiti achieved independence in 1804. I won't go through their names, but let me just read what happened to each of them very quickly, starting in 1804. Shot, suicide, died of illness, fled to France, fled, died of old age, these are all before their term ended. Fled to Jamaica, fled to Jamaica, executed, retired, fled to Jamaica, fled to Jamaica, fled to France, apoplexy, fled, fled to Jamaica, fled to Jamaica, blown up, poisoned, fled to Jamaica, murdered in jail, fled, dismembered, resigned, fled to Florida, there was a change here, overthrown, overthrown, resigned, overthrown, overthrown, died of illness, fled to France, stepped down, overthrown, overthrown, fled, taken hostage, fled to America. I think you'll agree that Haiti gives the concept term limits a whole new meaning. I might note that Haiti has had almost as many constitutions as it's had presidents, and they've survived almost as long. In the post-war, World War II era, one had the prolonged despotism of Papa Doc Duvalier, followed by a briefer regime of his son, Baby Doc. This period ended in the mid-1980s, followed by a period of instability, successive regimes which finally culminated in the first elections held in Haiti judged by the international community and the Haitians themselves to have been genuinely free and fair in 1990. The victor of that election was Jean Bertrand Aristide, a Catholic priest in the tradition of the liberation priests of Latin America. He came from what was called in Haiti the Tigees, which means the small church, the church of the dispossessed, as opposed to the establishment church. And he assumed office with a good deal of intellectual baggage, a somewhat half-baked Marxism and a considerable suspicion of the United States, a suspicion which is historically comprehensible. Haiti had for decades, generations, been an extractive society, a society in which the purpose of the government was to extract wealth from the society and redistribute it to the elites. And these elites had long maintained and cultivated their relations with the United States. They traveled to the United States, many of them had green cards and were permanent residents, they shopped in the United States, they maintained relations with American governments, and they exaggerated the significance of those relations to their own benefit. The United States had long supported the improvement of human rights in Haiti and the promotion of democracy, but it had also supported stability in the region, particularly in the Cold War context, and this ambivalence, if you will, in policy had led many in Haiti to doubt our commitment. And indeed, the United States had been skeptical of Aristide and his likely impact and had actually encouraged the Catholic Church to transfer him elsewhere in the early 1980s. So the relationship between Aristide and the United States was not good, and the society was a highly polarized one. Aristide, I think, made a number of poor judgments. If he did not initiate confrontation, he reciprocated it. It was a confrontational period. It ended in a coup, seven months after he had taken office. The coup began at the lower levels of the armed services. It was then supported by the upper levels, by the command, by General Sedros, who was the commander-in-chief at the time, and it was then supported by the elites in Haiti, members of the business community and wealthy families, who were relieved that a period of instability and threatened change had been ended. The United States and the international community responded initially with considerable Only four days after the coup, President Bush called Aristide's ouster, quote, "an unusual and extraordinary threat to the national security, foreign policy, and economy of the United States." In case anybody missed that, that was President Bush who said that Haiti was an unusual and extraordinary threat to the national security of the United States. Four days later, the OAS voted to impose an economic embargo on Haiti. There followed a period during which the United States and the United Nations sought to broker a negotiated solution. An effort to impose sanctions, a rather half-hearted effort to impose sanctions, was maintained. The sanctions were partial, and efforts were made to persuade both sides, President Aristide and those who had initiated the coup, to come to some sort of a negotiated solution which would allow the return of President Aristide. The United States sought to use its influence on both sides, but it had more influence with Aristide, and the consequence was that he was being continually pressed to make concessions in order to allow this to happen. An agreement was negotiated, signed in Governor's Island, an agreement that had been brokered by the United States and the United Nations. The regime in Haiti failed to follow through on that agreement, and it finally collapsed in the second week in October of last year, only, or sorry, the year previous, last year, sorry. Only a week after, 18 American Rangers had died in Mogadishu. It collapsed when the USS Harlan County, on a board which were 600 American trainers who were to deploy into Haiti to begin professionalizing Haiti military, were met on the pier by a small, unruly, hostile mob, and a decision was made to turn the ship away and abandon an effort to implement an agreement which the regime in Haiti did not seem willing to adhere to. Now, there's been a lot of debate as to whether turning the Harlan County away was necessary, whether those 600 troops, lightly armed as they were, could not have gotten ashore safely, and it's quite possible they could have. On the other hand, it was also quite likely that at some point, given the situation in Haiti, they were likely to be challenged. And an effort to deploy a force of that size in a country that polarized, in a situation that tense, was an effort to do peacekeeping on the cheap, and I think it was a wise decision to withdraw those troops and not go back until one not only had composed a stronger force, but a policy that had addressed the various eventualities and decided how to cope with them. That policy was initially announced on May 8th of this year. The policy had a number of elements. One was a decision to press sanctions to the limit, first because they might work, secondly because it was important to demonstrate that one had sought every means short of the use of force before using force. A second was to stop turning back refugees without questioning their credentials as genuine refugees. And this was consistent with the view that Haiti was a repressive society, that people did have legitimate fear of persecution, and then what, one could not assume that every Haitian who fled was simply in search of a job, however, many of them might actually be freeing for that reason. And finally, a decision to use political pressure to mount it and ultimately to consider the use of force if that became necessary. Throughout the succeeding months, efforts were made to resolve the situation peacefully. The regime in Haiti responded intransigently, culminating in July in its decision to expel the UN Human Rights Monitors, who had been there in an effort to monitor and ameliorate the appalling human rights situation in the country. That decision galvanized world opinion and led the United Nations to pass a resolution calling upon member states to take, to form an international coalition to take, quote, "all necessary means," unquote, to restore democracy in Haiti. Still efforts were made to address the situation peacefully. The United Nations sent the last delegation in August, which was rebuffed. The President, President Clinton, also made a last effort. He sent President Carter, Colin Powell, Sam Nunn, and that effort did succeed, only at the last moment, only as planes of the 82nd Airborne, filled with troops ready to use force, had left their airbase. In the weeks since that event on September 19th, democracy has been restored. There have been no fatal casualties among American or other multinational contingents. The multinational force has been welcomed throughout Haiti as liberators. President Aristide has, has returned with the slogan, "No to violence, no to vengeance, yes to reconciliation." This has been applied in practice as well as rhetorically, and the level of political violence is lower today in Haiti than it has been at any time in the last 40 years. Democratic institutions are functioning. A government representing a broad spectrum of opinion, including members of the elite of the business community and of opposition parties, as well as those who support Aristide, has been formed. All the ministers have been confirmed by the parliament. The government's policy has been approved by the parliament. The parliament has been passing laws. It passed a law on amnesty. It passed a law outlawing paramilitary groups. It has completed work on a law, on a police law, which will establish for the first time a civilian police force in Haiti. And based on the discussions we had yesterday in Haiti with President Aristide and with a broad cross-section of parliamentarians, I believe that they will announce in the next week or two the arrangements which will be necessary to, to hold legislative elections early in the new year. The operation has continued to go smoothly. Troop levels, as I've mentioned, have come down dramatically from 20,000, which was the peak on the day that President Aristide returned, to 6,000, which will be at the level, which will be the level we will be at, at December 15th. And I would expect that it would fall, it would continue to fall below that over the next month or two as we approach the level set for the UN mission, which will take over from the multinational force, a level of 6,000 of which no more than half will be American. And I would expect that that handoff to the United Nations from the multinational force will take place in the early months of next year. This will be an event of some consequence here in the United States and in New York. It will be an event, I think, which will pass largely unnoticed in Haiti because the UN force will be a force commanded by an American general. About half the troops will be American, the number of troops will be the number that will have been there for several weeks prior to that transfer, and I believe the transfer will be largely imperceptible in Haiti, important as it will be in Washington and New York. Let me address why I think that this is also important for the United States. One of the reasons cited for our interest in Haiti is, of course, the flow of refugees. Haiti has been a major source of refugees, and these, and the numbers have been such as to be destabilizing, not just for the United States, which has, of course, enormous absorptive capacity, but for even more, even more so for other societies of that region. The Bahamas, for instance, now has, 20% of its population are Haitian refugees. You know, imagine, this is the equivalent of the United States having 50 million Haitian refugees. This puts immense burdens, not just on their health systems and their educational systems, but on their political system, on the stability of countries like that. And there are a dozen countries of that sort in the Caribbean whose political stability, whose capacity to sustain democracy at rather low levels of GNP has been strained, in some cases strained to the utmost, by the instability in Haiti. So the, addressing the refugee crisis is not just a problem for the United States, it's a problem, and not just a social problem, but a security problem throughout the Caribbean region. Another reason, of course, is our support for democracy. Fifteen years ago, the bulk of the Western Hemisphere were ruled by authoritarian dictatorships. Today, the only country in the Western Hemisphere not ruled by a democratically-elected government is Cuba. Hand in hand with this democratic revolution-- Hand-in-hand with this democratic revolution has gone a revolution in market economy throughout the Western Hemisphere, as a result of which, for the last five years, trade between the United States and the Western Hemisphere has been growing at a faster rate, and American exports to that area has been growing at a substantially faster rate than our trade with any other part of the world. And this connection between market economies, market economics, free trade, and democracy is a clear linkage which we have a strong economic incentive in sustaining throughout the region. And what we and twenty-nine other countries have been able to do in Haiti sends a strong signal about the importance that everyone in this hemisphere attaches to democratic development. Now, there's been some suggestion that because we've solved Haiti's problem in this manner, we have to take a similar approach to every other problem in the world. The United States can't solve all of the world's problems, but the United States can solve some of them, and propensity and the relative ease with which the problem can be solved are obvious factors in choosing among various challenges as to which we will wish, we will want to address. The operation in Haiti is also of great importance to the international community beyond this hemisphere, as we, the nations of the international community, struggle with the problems of the post-Cold War world, the challenges Alan Keyes referred to. In the Gulf War in nineteen eighty-nine, in Somalia in nineteen ninety, in Rwanda in nineteen ninety-four, and in Haiti later in nineteen ninety-four, the international community faced challenges which it felt were intolerable. And in each case, it responded in a, what was initially novel, but which is increased, becoming an increasingly standard fashion, by calling upon an international coalition of the willing to take all necessary means to address these challenges. In the Gulf War, in Somalia, and then in Haiti, the United States chose to lead that international coalition. In Rwanda, France picked up that challenge. These operations have not been uniformly successful. The Gulf, the liberation of Kuwait was certainly a great success, and the operation in Haiti, so far, has been more successful than any of us had dreamed. We need to, as we grope with the challenges of this new post-Cold War world, grope with the lessons of these and other responses. Haiti is not Somalia, despite the easy analogy that many fell into. Haiti was not a society in civil war. It's never really had a civil war. It is not a society of warrior nomads who believe that no pickup truck is complete without a requireless rifle. And it is not a society without a strong tradition of national unity and national institutions. Haiti had, even during the coup, a freely-elected president. It had a freely-elected parliament. It had institutions which were not being permitted to function. So it was a very different situation from Somalia. Neither is Haiti in nineteen ninety-four, Haiti in nineteen fifteen. And the suggestion that the United States was going to have to spend another fifteen years there was also, I think, an inappropriate analogy. The United States, for that matter, in nineteen ninety-four is not the United States in nineteen fifteen. A better analogy, in terms of our commitment to Haiti, was our commitment to Panama, our commitment to Grenada. In both cases, the United States went in, it restored democracy, it assisted in consolidating that restoration, it left within a few months, and it's left behind functioning democratic systems, who've had numerous democratic elections and are running their own affairs very well. Thank you. The difference, of course, between the post-Cold War approach to Haiti and the Cold War approach to Panama and Grenada is that in Haiti, twenty-nine other countries went in with us, and we went in on the basis of a UN Security Council resolution mandate. Haiti, as I've said, is not Somalia, but there are other international efforts that have taken place over the last several years, to which analogies can be drawn. Cambodia, Mozambique, Namibia, South Africa, El Salvador, Nicaragua. Every one of these are countries in which the international community has made a commitment to assist with money, with troops, with training, a transition to democracy. And in every one of those cases, they've met with a substantial degree of success. So I think we are slowly finding patterns and approaches that work. It's a method of trial and error, it's the only method we have, but we are learning from our mistakes. And I would say that, in conclusion, there are two fundamental lessons that we have learned and that we need to continue to apply. One is that as we seek to match force to diplomacy, that we not let our reach exceed our grasp, that we not seek more through diplomacy than we're prepared to secure, if necessary, through force, if we are indeed seeking to place force at the disposal of diplomacy. Our reach has probably exceeded our grasp in Somalia. We set goals simply beyond that which we were prepared to pursue through the use of force. And perhaps that's been the case in Bosnia as well. But it hasn't been the case in Haiti, it hasn't been the case in some of these other situations, and so we are, I think, slowly learning this lesson. A second lesson is that peacekeeping is not a military operation, it is a political military operation. It is an, it is an operation, the success of which requires the integration of political, military, economic, and assistance efforts from the beginning and for the duration of the operation. In preparing for the intervention in Haiti, in conducting that intervention, and in dealing with the consequences of that intervention, we here in Washington have made an intense effort to bring to bear all of the instruments of our government, all of the instruments of our various agencies of government, to bear on the problem at hand. A similar effort has been made in Haiti itself. Justified attention and praise has been focused on the role of the American troops in Haiti, who have indeed performed magnificently. It's sometimes forgotten, however, that there was a small band of American diplomats and civil servants, who were there before the troops arrived, who were there with the troops, and who will be there after the troops leave, whose contribution to this effort, in its planning and in its implementation, has been essential. Indeed, it is perhaps not accidental that the only fatalities in this operation came when two embassy employees, both Haitians, were murdered three weeks ago by a member of the Haitian Army. It was a payroll robbery, an economically motivated murder, but it is an indication of the level of risk which our embassy employees also run in situations of this sort, and will continue to run as we grope our way forward toward addressing the challenges of this new world order. Thank you very much.
The questioner looked back at the beginning of the United Nations and saw that it foresaw the need for cooperation amongst the sort of great powers. Obviously, since the founding of the UN, that cooperation has sometimes been altogether lacking. And he was asking what prospects Ambassador Dobbins sees in the future, given the kind of changes that he is talking about, for continued cooperation among the great powers who exercise veto authority on the Security Council.
Well, I think clearly the prospects are much better, and that's been demonstrated by the degree of cooperation that has been achieved in, in the Security Council on, on key issues. I, I, I think that will be sustained. It will depend on the relations between the United States and China and Russia, for the most part, and how those evolve. But for the time being, the, the situation is such that, that if the United States is prepared to make a major commitment to address an international challenge, it's quite likely to be able to secure support in the Security Council for the course of action, more or less, that it, that it seeks. There have been, I think, one or two vetoes since the fall of the Berlin Wall, but they've not been on central issues, and, and we've been able to work effectively. Now, there are other limitations on the ability of the international system to function. One is the weakness of the United Nations as an institution. I don't want to exaggerate that. The United Nations is, you know, Winston Churchill said of democracy, "It's the worst possible system, except that there's nothing better." I think he said it more eloquently than that. And the United Nations is the only, you know, world organization that we have, but the fact is, it's, it has limited capabilities to sustain, to mount large-scale military or political military operations. It's got something like seventeen of them going now, and that's severely taxing its ability to do it. That's one of the reasons why, in many cases, they're turning to these multinational forces, which are mandated by the UN, sanctioned by the UN, but organized by some major power that's prepared to gather others into a coalition, run the coalition, solve the problem, and then turn it back over to the United Nations. The limit on that is, are there, are there major powers prepared to do that, and how often? And the answer is that there are, but not all the time, and, and many problems will not meet the threshold which will create that kind of international effort.
Go to the microphone, yes?
Mr. Dobbins, given the new alignment in the Congress, particularly on the Senate Foreign Relations Committee, are you holding your breath and hoping that nothing goes wrong in Haiti between now and, well, hoping that nothing goes wrong in this reduction phase of our presence in Haiti? Because it would appear that the Chairman of the Foreign Relations Committee is no friend of human rights, and certainly no supporter of the operation in Haiti. Would you care to comment on Mr. Helms and his stewardship?
No. I'll answer, I'll answer the rest of the question, though. I've been holding my breath for some months now. Sure, I mean, we have conducted this operation with, with intense care to, to eliminate the risk, to the extent we can, of accidental or unanticipated consequences, and to minimize the risks of intended ones. That said, no one can predict, and Haiti, although it is probably, at the moment, a more tranquil environment than most neighboring states, with, with thousands of American servicemen there, something, something untoward could happen. I would hope, and I see some signs in some discussions with people on Capitol Hill, that there is a process of reevaluation. There was a Haitian politician who visited Washington last week, who was among those who opposed President Aristide, opposed the, the intervention. And he spoke, in fact, at the Heritage Foundation. And, and he said that he had opposed the intervention, but now that the Americans were there, he hoped they'd stay, because he and his part of the political spectrum didn't trust Aristide, felt the United States was playing an important role in keeping the game honest as democracy was consolidated, and he hoped the United States would stay until they'd gone through a cycle both of legislative and, and presidential elections. The, as I've said, I think everybody accepts that this operation has gone better than they expected, critics as well as proponents, that one has to evaluate the situation as one finds it, and there's certainly a strong consensus in Haiti that the United States should see this through on the timetable that we've established, which would have us turning this over to the UN early next year, and then, and then staying with the UN through the presidential elections and the inauguration of a new president a year from February. And this Haitian politician put it fairly well, I think, when he said that, that you Americans tell us the importance of reconciliation, but we're not going to be reconciled in Haiti if you're not reconciled here. If you can't compose a bipartisan approach to Haiti, we're not likely to get, to succeed in getting one either, given the historic polarization in our society. So I think we have a role to play, and I hope that, that, that there can be a bipartisan agreement on at least some elements of that.
Microphone?
Ah, yes, good morning. I'm Professor Cooks, I'm with the Prince George's Community College delegation and ambassador. Welcome back to the States, I'd like to say. My question is, do you have any idea, by the way, the question is without commentary, please. The question is, do you have any idea as to when the border will be opened between the, between Haiti and the Dominican Republic? That affects me personally, for one thing, because I travel extensively to the Dominican Republic, and I used to go frequently to Haiti via the border of Daehban. So that's the first part. And the second part is, can you tell me the status, or what will be the status, of the refugees on the island of Cuba, I should say Guantanamo, as well as Grand Turk Islands? I do believe we have some refugees stationed there as well. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know when the, when the border will be opened. I don't know that it's officially closed, but I think it, as a practical matter, has been...
I was there, last, I was there in August, and I tried desperately to get across the border. Submachine guns on the Dominican side made it perfectly clear that we weren't going across the border.
Yeah, okay, well, what the Dominicans are doing about the border, I'm unclear. The, so I can't, I really just can't, I haven't, that issue hasn't crossed my horizon.
And Grand Turk Island?
Well, on the refugees, there were twenty thousand refugees in Guantanamo at the peak, fifteen thousand of them have returned. There are about five thousand that are left there now. President Aristide is encouraging their return, and we are continuing to allow time for them to, to return voluntarily, and we anticipate that the bulk of them will do so, as the situation in Haiti is demonstratively safe and stable. There are no Haitian refugees on, on Grand Turk. We, we had built a center there in which we were going to process people at one point, but, but all of the Haitian refugees at the moment are, are in Guantanamo.
The question had, had two parts. The first was that in his statement, Ambassador Dobbins had mentioned that President Bush had said that Haiti was, represented, the overthrow of the government in Haiti represented an important threat to our, to America's security interest in the world, and he was asking the ambassador to elaborate on that. That's actually a good question. Control yourself. No, I shouldn't be making comments, but, and the second part of the question had to do with whether or not the US absorption of refugees, our capacity to do so was in fact a justification for the Haiti intervention. And second, if we were concerned about the human rights situation in Haiti, why then wouldn't we have intervened in Rwanda? Did I get it all? I think so.
Okay, well, I don't know that, I mean, I don't know that I can elaborate too much on what President Bush said. I was simply quoting what he said. It was his first official reaction to the overthrow of Aristide, and it was a public statement, I believe it was a public statement actually made with President Aristide in the room, if I remember correctly, and it was the official administration policy, which was that this reversal of democracy in a, in a continent that otherwise was going one way on democracy was indeed a challenge which we regarded as a threat to our national interests. Now, as to the, as to the reasons that the United States addressed this problem, I mean, and what I was, I mean, my purpose was to show that there was some continuity of approach, that we naturally tried to address the problem peacefully and with minimal sanctions, then we stepped up sanctions, and eventually we had to threaten the use of force before the problem was resolved. But it was identified from the beginning as a serious challenge to American policy in the hemisphere. As to the reasons, the reasons were, have been several. The influx of refugees, the United States was spending, up until September, about two hundred million dollars a year to provide Haiti's Border Patrol to interdict the outflow of migrants and to interdict the inflow of economic goods as a result of the embargo. And so that, that, those costs were going to continue indefinitely unless the... And so that, those costs were going to continue indefinitely unless the policy took the next step of solving the problem more directly. So refugees, the support for democracy in the hemisphere, and the feeling that democracy in the hemisphere was linked to the economic development of the hemisphere, as it demonstrably has been over the last decade, and to the increase in markets and the increase in American exports. The concern about regional stability, the fact that other fragile countries friendly the United States, trading with the United States, dependent on the United States in the region, were much more susceptible to the effects of an unstable polity that close to them. All of these were reasons why the United States felt that it needed to address this problem, if necessary, through the use of force, and its reasons, and those are the reasons largely why the Security Council felt likewise. As to Rwanda, well, I answered, I can answer the question two ways. First of all, the United States did put troops in Rwanda, mounted a humanitarian effort, and once the worst of that situation had been addressed removed those troops. I think, as I said, that propinquity and the ease with which a challenge can be addressed, a problem solved, are clearly factors in deciding which of the myriad of problems and challenges around the world you're going to, you're going to set priorities on, devote American resources and, if necessary, American forces to. And Rwanda is a far more intractable problem, and it's a lot further away.
First microphone there?
Yes, I just had a question. If I understood correctly, you said that the Haitian Army has been reduced from 20,000 soldiers to 6,000. I was just wondering what...
No, that's the Americans. But go ahead.
But the Haitian Army is being reduced. I was just wondering what steps were being taken to reintegrate the Haitian soldiers back into civilian society, other than adding to the already high unemployment rate in Haiti? And also to prevent them from posing a threat to democratic institutions in Haiti in the future?
Right. Well, it's an important point. It wasn't quite what I was addressing when I spoke. I was talking about reducing the number of American troops from 20,000. The Haitian Army was 6,000 to 7,000. It had 7,000 people on its books when the American intervention took place, of whom some probably didn't exist, but were simply drawing pay, zombies, as they were called in Haiti. The intent was to reduce that to 3,000, to retrain that as an interim police force, and to use it supplemented by some other people as a police force that would continue to operate in Haiti until a permanent new civilian police force could be trained. So the process of reducing the Haitian Army to this 3,000 approximately, turning it into an interim police force, is underway. 2,000 have already gone through a course set up by the Department of Justice, a process of vetting and approval based on their records, eliminating the worst human rights violators. The ultimate intent, at least of President Aristide, these are, of course, decisions for Haiti, not us, is to reduce the Haitian Army to about 1,500. The process of building a civilian police force is only just beginning. A new law is about to be passed. The first class will go to the Police Academy, which we are helping organize, we hope in January, and we hope that by the time the United Nations leaves, a year from then, 4,000 new civilian police will have all gone through a four-month training program, which is a fairly substantial training program of the duration that one would give a policeman in the United States, for instance. So you'll have a fairly thoroughly trained civilian police force with no connection to the Ministry of Defense or to the, to the, to the, to the old Haitian Army. A much reduced Haitian Army, which will be outnumbered and outgunned by the new civilian police, will also continue to exist and will be professionalized and turned to the legitimate tasks one would have for a military.
Second microphone?
Thanks. You mentioned the Haitian Parliament had passed an amnesty law. I was wondering how widespread that was going to be. Any of the members of the Haitian police or military who committed these human rights violations be brought to justice?
Well, this was, of course, issues with which the Haitian politicians had to confront when they addressed this issue in their parliament, and they addressed them rather artfully in a way that makes it difficult for me to answer the question, which was undoubtedly the intention when they passed the law, knowing they would have to go face their voters a few weeks later. What they basically did was authorize the president. They extended the powers of the president to grant amnesty and gave it, it was in the Constitution but in a rather vague way, gave it a more concrete form. They basically allowed him to amnesty political crimes, crimes that had, one interpretation would be crimes that had a political motivation. The burden thus is on the president to amnesty individual cases. Now, he did issue an amnesty in connection with Governor's Island about a year ago that extended to the coup, the actual people who engaged in the coup. Those people have been amnestied for that particular act. And the question of future amnesty of individuals for crimes committed during the coup period will arise in the future, and will have to be addressed within the Haitian political system and within the Haitian judicial system. So the law defined and extended the power of the president, but it didn't amnesty individual Haitians.
First mic?
Ambassador Dobbins, it was not so long ago that there were refugees from both Cuba and Haiti trying to reach our shores. So I have a two-part question on that subject. First part is, do you feel that the continuation of the trade embargo against Cuba contributes anything to American national security? And my second part is, should we put to a vote of the United Nations whether or not we continue this trade embargo?
Well, happily, I don't do Cuba. Happily for me. So I really, I'm really not sure that I can answer that question in any very intelligent fashion. It strikes me that what is at issue here is a US national measure that's in pursuance of US national interests. Many countries don't agree with our policy and probably wouldn't vote for it, but that doesn't mean we're not perfectly free to adopt the policy and pursue it. So I don't know that there's any requirement, moral or otherwise, for us to submit this to some kind of international public side.
The question is, that Haiti has never really enjoyed a very good relationship with its neighbor, the Dominican Republic. What is Ambassador Dobbins' prognosis as to the future of that relationship?
It is a fairly minimal relationship. I mean, it's, they're on the same island, but they're surrounded by a mountain chain. I mean, they're separated by a mountain chain, so the communication between the two sides is infrequent, except in villages along the border. The international border is only 45 minutes by car from Port-au-Prince, and yet it's very seldom frequented. They're also separated by language and culture. So I don't see that relationship personally developing very rapidly. I think what Haiti has, what the coup and the follow-up to the coup has occasioned is a much stronger interest in the surrounding English-speaking, for the most part, democracies in Haiti. Every one of them have put troops in Haiti. Every one of them were urging us to take tougher action earlier. Every one of them voted for all of these resolutions. They were the first to join the multinational coalition. Their forces are, they have what's called the CARICOM, which is like the European Community. I mean, it's a Caribbean community which has a defense dimension. They have a composite battalion in Haiti, and they've urged Haiti to join CARICOM, which is their, which has a common market and a defense dimension. It's still incomplete, but it's quite a positive development. And Aristide and the Haitian government have said they're interested. So I think in many ways, what's going to develop as a result of this experience and the solidarity that's been demonstrated, it was these countries, four or five of them, that agreed to take Haitians in safe havens when we were looking for support, when the refugee outflow was at its greatest. I think those relations are going to develop, and I think that's very positive for Haiti, because it'll bring it, for the first time in its national existence, into a polity of somewhat similar, countries in somewhat similar situations.[1748.32][1748.32](APPLAUSE)